I call the November 20, November 4th, 2025, regular scheduled Board of County Commissioners to order, for the record, Commissioner Perkins won't be in attendance tonight. He's feeling quite under the weather, so y'all keep him in your thoughts and prayers. I've asked Commissioner Hale to lead us in the prayer, and Commissioner White's gonna lead us in the pledge, so if y'all would, please stand.
Lord, we come to you today thankful. Or we come to you today to ask for your hands to be right around Commissioner Perkins, around this board meeting. Lord, we pray that you ask that you get everyone home safely. Lord, we're glad to be here to do the work of the people. Lord, protect us, guide us, forgive us our sins. And most of all, Lord, we thank your son, Jesus Christ, to pay the ultimate cost for our sins. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we only have one meeting there, and that's the October 21st, 2025, regular scheduled board meeting. Any questions, comments, errors, corrections, or do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Mobley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Next item on the agenda is public concerns and comments. I do have one comment card completed here, and that is by Mr. Keith Broders of 970 Pine Mount Road, Lake City, Florida. Mr. Broders, welcome.
I've got a couple of things that I'd like to comment on. First off, December 15th is a very important day. When the Constitution was initially ratified, the Federalists had to yield to the Anti-Federalists and include something called the Bill of Rights. The main purpose of the government was to protect the rights of the people. So the Bill of Rights is really something that should be found in the front of the Constitution, not as an amendment to the Constitution. If you look at the state of Florida and every other state, all 50 states have a Declaration of Rights to begin with. And I would like to propose, again, I've done this before, but nothing's happened, I'd like to have a proclamation or an announcement that the week of December 15th would be recognized by Suwannee County as Bill of Rights Week or Bill of Rights Day. And I think this would be very important. Also, I believe that most of the adults in our community, the parents and grandparents, have either forgotten or were never taught the principles of individual liberty and personal responsibility. And we cannot expect our elected officials to do their job if we don't do ours. Our job is to hold them accountable. When they take an oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and fail to do so, we have to speak up, and we need to hold them accountable. And so I'd like to encourage all of you to please visit my website and start educating yourself, because frankly, it's our responsibility to educate our children and grandchildren and our loved ones, because unfortunately, the schools are not doing a real good job of doing that. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
What's your website?
Liberty Tree Online, libertytreeonline.us.
Thank you, Mr. Broders.
Moses Klepper, 14581, 102nd Path Live Vote, here representing we, the people of North Central Florida.
Mr. Klepper, you gonna speak more than three minutes?
Not sure.
Okay. All right.
You could interrupt me at three if I do.
Okay.
But I'm already in 10 seconds. It's short tonight.
I ain't started it yet, but go ahead.
Yeah. Florida Statute, Statute 286.01142 requires that members of the public be given reasonable opportunity to be heard on a proposition. That means every proposition that's in front of y'all before the Board or Commission. The chairman moving most, if not all, of the agenda items to the consent agenda is not reasonable, nor is limiting a citizen to nine to 12 seconds per agenda item to speak his or her concerns about those individual items reasonable. Again, per policy, with general business items, citizens are allowed three minutes per item. On consent items, individual citizens are allowed three minutes for all consent item issues. The First Amendment is a foundational part of the United States Constitution that prevents the government from interfering with certain essential freedoms related to expression and belief, such as freedom of speech. Citizens can express their opinions and ideas, even unpopular or offensive ones, without censorship or retaliation by government. Freedom of petition, freedom to petition to government, citizens can ask the government to address problems or change policies. County Commissioners can be sued directly and held personally liable in Florida for actions taken in bad faith or with malicious purpose or in a manner exhibiting wanton and willful disregard of citizens' rights. This board and the previous board has created a paper trail of First Amendment infringements. I plead with this board not to push me into a situation where I have no other option or alternative than to take legal action. This is the last time I will make this plea from this podium.
Um, thank you for your comment. I did have one other person that I was supposed to call up to speak. Ms. Hampton from Suwannee Chamber has a couple announcements to make. Welcome, Ms. Hampton.
Thank you. Danielle Hampton, Suwannee Chamber of Commerce. I just want to make two announcements, actually. Impact Magazine, we publish our Impact Magazine once a year. It came out September, so if you would like, I put some copies out here, but if you would like a copy, you can stop by the Chamber of Commerce and grab your copy. And also, we partner with Lake City Reporter to print these. It has all our numbers in here and ads and whatnot. It's really good, so please stop by and pick one up. Also, we are a, oh, it went out, sorry. We are a month out to Christmas on the square. I also have flyers, they're gonna be placed out there. We're gonna kick off the Christmas on the Square on Thursday with our tree lighting and fun run. Friday, we'll have vendors, entertainment, the snow slide, it'll be back. And also Santa Land, we'll have some interesting things for the kids that day as well. For Saturday, same thing, Santa Land, some more entertainment. And also, that evening, we'll have the parade. So please join us. This is the 41st Annual Christmas on the Square. All right?
December?
December 4th, 5th, 6th, 4th, 5th, and 6th.
What day are we lighting the tree?
Fourth.
December the 4th, at what time?
At 6 o'clock.
6:00 PM, lighting the tree.
Sure.
All right, I better put that on my calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else from the public wishing to speak? I will close public comment. Next item on the agenda is proclamations and presentations. We have one tonight from the Florida Department of Transportation, and I don't know who all you brought, so I'm not gonna call them by name, David. I see two of them, but there might be another one somewhere else. Mr. David Tyler and his folks.
Good evening. I'm Amy Robertson with DOT. I'm the Planning Supervisor of the Planning, Environmental, and Management Group. Our goal today is just to provide you with a brief update on the FDOT Work Program and answer any questions you may have. As of September 30th, the FDOT Detentive Five-Year Work Program officially closed for fiscal year '27 through '31, setting the direction in project funding for the next five-year period starting July 1st, 2026. The Florida Department of Transportation hosted our yearly Detentive Five-Year Work Program Public Hearing on October 21st. The Detentive Work Program includes projects scheduled for fiscal year '27 through 2031. We will be accepting public comments from the hearing date until November 20th, 2025. After the public comment period, the Detentive Work Program is then reviewed by the Florida Legislature and the Governor's Office and is then adopted by the State Secretary of Transportation on July 1st, 2026. The department would also like to thank Suwannee County for their support in our last, in our summit that y'all hosted, provided the venue for us last April. It was a great event, and we really appreciate your support in that, and we're looking forward to doing it again in the future. Additionally, I want to go over some, provide some solicitation dates for some of our programs. The Safe Routes to School Solicitation Cycle opened up September 30th and will run through January 31st, 2026. The Transportation Alternative Program opened up October 22nd and runs through January 22nd, 2026. Applications for that grant can be submitted through the Grant Application Program, or GAP. And then the Scrap SCOP Solicitation opened up October 23rd and runs through January 22nd, 2026. And those applications can be submitted through the Oasis Portal. And we also want to give a quick updates on some projects, but I will let, turn it over to David to do that, and I'll also hand out the Work Program for Suwannee County.
Thank you, Amy. So Amy's passing around excerpts from the Work Program Public Hearing, so the next five years of projects that are funded here in Suwannee County. And I'm gonna go over a couple of those, just for the benefit of the audience. But again, this is available online. Public comment is through November, so make sure if you guys have any feedback you can provide, you can do it through that venue or just reach out to us. Again, my name is David Tyler. I work for the Florida Department of Transportation. I'm the Transportation Planning Manager. And a couple of key projects, Suwannee County's done really well the past few years, getting projects funded, so it's good to see, there's a lot on there. Some of the key projects on a local road, we have County Road 250 from Lafayette County Line to 109 Third Resurfacing. You're familiar with that project. I know we're working right now to get the design phase started, that should go to construction in fiscal year '28. We also have the I-10 at US 129 Interchange Improvement Project. We're adding traffic signals and some additional left turn lanes at the ramp terminals for the interstate there. And we're also adding an additional signal at the Busy B exit. So this will let to construct, this has already led to construction, and the contractor should be out there sometime in December, so you'll see some earth turning out there around December, with the estimated finish of December of 2027, so that's the timeframe on that project. Concurrent with that, we have a resurfacing job along US 129 from US 90 to I-10. It's in the same schedule as the Interchange Improvement Projects. They've let together, so should start towards the end of this year, going through 2027, of December of 2027. And, let's see here, we have a resurfacing project on 129 from I-10 up to the Hamilton County Line. That project led in August of 2025 and scheduled to end, the start should start, I'm sorry, again, 2025, then of December. My notes here a little bit backwards here. So we also have a resurfacing on I-10 from 90 to US 129. And some of the local projects that are currently underway is the 76th Street Project from US 90 to River Road, resurfacing the existing lanes. We also have County Road 49 Project from County Road 252 to US 90, the widening and resurfacing of existing lanes. That's underway right now currently. And we talked about 250. And I also have County Road 137 from US 90 to County Road 136, a widening project as well. The target date for that is April of 2026, and we should be sending an agreement to the county after the first of the year for that project. So another thing we wanted to leave behind with you guys is this resource guide, and this is a good resource, just, it talks about the different funding programs and how to interface with DOT on getting board projects come from, how are they funded, who to reach out to, if you have any coordination issues. I know Amy mentioned our solicitation programs. We work really closely with your county staff, and we have a pretty strong working relationship with them, so they're familiar with these programs. But definitely, if there's any projects in your district you want to talk about, we're happy to meet individually with any of you of the commission, and we definitely appreciate the partnership. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, David, I appreciate that. I do have one, and I'm confused when I saw it, but on County Road 250, this is the first time I've seen this. It's my understanding we were going from State Road 51 to 193rd. This has it backwards. This has from the river, Lafayette County Line, to 193rd, which was the second half of the road. The first half of the road is where the engineers designed, and so I'm hoping this is a typo, because we've been telling all the public it's from 51, which had the higher traffic counts.
Yeah, I want to have Paul talk to that, since he's over our local programs office, but yeah, this is for the second portion of that.
Oh, this is the second half of it. No, we're not talking about the first half, that you and I talked about earlier.
Correct, yes. So, good evening, Paul Webb. I am the local programs engineer for the district for DOT. So yes, the current project that is under design fixing to go to construction shortly, there's a few minor items we're still waiting on or needing to get for, to move, to give authorization to advertise, but that project is on County Road 250 from 193rd to 51.
Okay.
The other one mentioned, that is the, I believe it's the last remaining section or segment of 250, because the Lafette side, I believe, should be finished up now.
It is.
And then this is more of the, let's see, eastern end of 250, and so that other one is slated for fiscal year '28 funding. So that one would, design should start on the portion from the river to 193rd, no sooner than July of 2027, so that's when our fiscal year '28 starts.
Perfect.
So good news there.
Yes, yes. I was on a different page.
And so just to clarify, the packet you're looking at is for like, next year on?
The next.
So the stuff that's already in the program isn't gonna show up on this list, which is the initial phase for that project? Yep, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Yep, so.
Any other questions for David or his team?
Could you clarify that, what you said on about 49? Well, it wasn't 90 to 252, was it? That's what it said.
Yeah, so, we have a, okay, Paul, this is also, all the county roads are Paul's, so I'll let him talk to you, he's better.
Yes, so it was, that one is, that one is slightly, it was programmed from 90 to 252, but given the financial constraints on the project, the term and I was, ended a little bit, I guess you'd say, north of 252. So yes, that is, you know, it did stop this project that's currently in construction, did technically stop a little sooner. I don't, I'm not sure the exact distance prior to 252. But we, the hope is that on the future segments that are to come on that, to hopefully try to absorb it, and then worst case, the, you know, the county may need to request a third segment, depending on how the bids that are received on it.
And like you and I've talked about before, Paul, I mean, it comes down to money and inflation, you know, and it's a five-year program. Just so the public understands, these projects go into the program on year one. Year two, we wait for funding. Year three, we go through you guys and planning and design. Year four, five-ish, we're going to bid and actually awarding a contract, so there's a lot of moving parts there in the economy that affect some of these, and with inflation the way it's been the last six, eight years.
Right.
A lot of these projects throughout the state have came in over budget.
Yeah, so our state-funded grant programs, the Scrap and SCOP, which help pretty much do all the resurfacing or widening of the county roads, it's legislatively appropriated, so out of, we only get a, you know, based off the district size, our district gets appropriated a certain amount, you know, so for instance, this past fiscal year, so last solicitation cycle, we sent out solicitations for, you know, all of our applicable counties to apply for projects. We, you know, we ask, you know, maximum of three, if there is somehow a way of a capacity type project, so there's truly adding lanes to a project. We have allowed four total, but typically only three. This past cycle, we had roughly 45 projects submitted, and I think there was a total of, all requests from all of our eligible counties totaled almost $201 million, and for our entire district were allocated just under $36 million.
Right, and your district consists of how many counties?
18 counties total.
So you got 18 counties, you got 200 and some thousand in requests, and what'd you say, 30?
Thirty, yes, 200 millions roughly, if we were to fund all projects as were sent to us, that submitted by all the agencies, we, and we only have 30 million total to give out to each project, you know, to the whole project each fiscal year.
And out of your 18, how many of those are considered small counties by the legislature? Is it 11?
Pretty much all of them, but the east side.
Right, so you got just your small counties requesting $200 million worth of projects. I'm telling this so the public understands what we're working with, and then you got only 30 million, which was awarded by your state legislature.
Yeah.
To go into the small county Scrap and SCOP programs.
And any given, any given project, you know, like you said, based off of the market, how the construction market's been going ever since, you know, 2020, it's been very volatile, and costs, you know, have done nothing but go up. And so, you know, take that into account, that 30, 35 million dollars, and, you know, I haven't crunched the actual numbers, but you're estimating an average of roughly 8 million a project. So we can fund maybe six, or six projects each fiscal year, and we get submitted 42, 45, give or take.
Right.
So it is, it's very tough, you know, even on us. We feel strongly on, you know, all of our communities, especially the rural communities, and so it's, it is a very kind of tough situation to be in.
Right.
Alotted so much.
The message to the public would be, hey, lobby your representatives in Tallahassee to put more money in the small county Scrap and SCOP program, so that there's a bigger pie for these 11 fiscally constrained small counties to go after versus 30 million, because it's not DOT's fault, the legislature's telling you how much money you have to work with, and then all, you know, all of us small counties are hitting you guys up to
Right.
Pick the project. And obviously, it's a tough job for y'all to run the metrics and figure out which ones.
So to Paul's point, we try and be equitable with that funding. Suwannee County's done well comparatively, so I think that a lot of that, you guys do a good job administering your projects and getting them through, and good projects are coming to us through that application process. My only complaint with SCOP and Scrap is there's not enough funding.
Right.
It's kind of the lifeblood in these rural communities.
It is.
And, you know, we're not, we're definitely not legislative people, we're not gonna lobby one way or the other.
Right.
But we're gonna administer this program, given the resources that we have available. And, yeah, that is, it always comes up short, and it goes a long way in getting your guys' needs met, so definitely, we're definitely big advocates for that.
Yeah, I say that for our board. I know our board has been lobbying for Scrap and SCOP increases, and I think a lot of our constituents have been lobbying, you know, our representatives for, don't, if anything, don't let that number decrease.
Absolutely.
You know, so, but we appreciate everything y'all do.
I got a question, so you know I'm gonna ask it.
Yes, sir.
How do I get a dirt-to-pave conversion?
184th?
Yes.
This.
And it's a great question.
We're gonna change that up to Frank White Boulevard.
So, yeah, you know, obviously, every, you know, it's definitely very beneficial to have a dirt road paved, you know, definitely, whether the maintenance and upkeep on it. However, so a dirt-to-pave, it is eligible through funding through the SCOP program, that is what allows paving of currently dirt roads. Really, the biggest, I guess, concern with dirt roads, you know, this county and all other counties too, it's hard for a dirt road, when we're looking at them and trying to rank them and see which ones, you know, offer the, essentially the biggest bang for the buck, whether it be safety increases and all, the existing, when you have existing pavement roads that are, you know, have known deficiencies, or their design criteria needs to be updated, whether it's widening the lanes, or adding shoulders, or increasing any of that, it's tough for that, for a project of that nature, a dirt road, to beat out the ones that are, when you have existing pavement that may be deteriorating and potholes and that kind of thing.
Well, we got all the above, I get that.
And I'll add to what Paul's saying. So I think in the past, there was a right-of-way issue, which it sounds like now the right-of-way's in hand. So at this point, it's just get it up your priority when you're submitting projects from the county, and the higher it is, the more weight that carries when we're selecting projects for Suwannee. So, yeah, if it's your number one priority, we're definitely gonna do what we can to get it funded out of that, so ultimately.
Thank you.
Yep. And again, get us more funding, I mean, I'm not gonna.
You shouldn't have told him that, because now he's gonna tell us, my road's number one.
It's been five years I've been asking for this, and I'm not gonna quit.
Like I said, the one fault to this program is it's just not big enough, you know, we need, if there was more funding, there's a lot more we could do with this.
Hundred percent.
But, yeah, we'll definitely keep working with you all, and we hear that from the staff level. It's definitely getting communicated to us, the importance of these projects.
Well, that's because they get there.
So don't worry, we're hearing the message, and we're doing what we can.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
We appreciate your standing too, so thank you. Any other questions?
Any other Commissioners having any questions for those guys?
Thank you, guys.
Hey, thank y'all for coming. I know y'all, most of y'all don't live locally, so if y'all want to slide out, we won't take it disrespectfully.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hale.
On the heels of that, though, I hope the Rural Renaissance Bill comes back this year again. It was SB 110 last year, and if it does, I would really like to see everyone get behind that, everyone in this room, everyone in these counties as well, because that would have helped us tremendously had that been passed, so.
Again, thank FDOT, thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all.
Amy, Paul, David, thank y'all for coming. Y'all have a safe trip home. Thank y'all. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's three items, items three through seven. Any questions, comments, concerns on any of the particular items, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner White.
Second.
Paper, rock, scissors, Commissioner, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. It is 5:35. We have one, two, three, four time-specific, time-specific items. That presentation kind of ran us a little bit late, but at 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, this is item number eight, or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider CPA 25-03, an application by Friar Finance Incorporated to amend the future land use plan map of the Comprehensive Plan by changing the land use classification from agricultural 2A2 to residential 1RSF1. Mr. Ron Meeks, Mr. Meeks, will you, I believe, will you address, I believe, number nine? These are kind of tied together. If you do one, these are both, they're different issues, but it's the same parcel.
Correct.
One's land use, one's zoning.
Yeah, it's just a procedural thing. When you do a small-scale amendment, you actually run the applications together, so one motion changes one map, the other motion changes the other map, but it's the same property, the same request, it's just changing one land use from ag 2 to residential, and have the zoning reflect that from agricultural 2 to residential.
Right, so in essence, there would be no use to do one and say, no, we're not doing the other.
So when we do the consideration, basically with that application, if the board would consider CPA 2503 and LDR 2504 in one, in one motion, either approving or denying the request.
Right. Mr. Morrison, is that okay to do those? I mean, same property, same issue, can we do those like that?
Absolutely. Would we, for purposes, be approved then, separate from your mic?
Your mic, he's, the clerk's saying your mic.
Yes, so long as that, when we approve them, we approve them separately, so that way the minutes are clear.
Right, so we can't do them in one motion, we'll do them in separate motions, but we can hear them together?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Meeks, gonna be sworn in, Mr. Morrison?
Do you swear for him, testament, you give him this cause, it'll be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so that be God?
I do. So the application in consideration, CPA 2503 and LDR 2504, is an application by Friar Finance. It proposes to change track of land in the land use and the zoning atlas of Suwannee County. It's a 97-acre parcel made up of a 77-acre and a western 20 acres of a 40. They would make up 97 acres, changing the land use and the zoning from agricultural 2 to residential 1. Currently, the density is one dwelling unit per two acres, and this would bring the density to one dwelling unit per acre. The access for the property is off of State Road 51, and it's immediately east of where the intersection of State Road 51 and Old Sugar Mill Farm subdivision is, if you're just trying to locate it in generality. The property is located inside the designated urban development area of the county, so it meets all of the requirements for its land use and density request. If the property were subdivided, it would require the installation and construction of new paved roads paid for by the developer, and those roads all have to meet our county standards as far as the right-of-way and wearing surface for those roads. So at this time, if you don't have any questions of me, then I would enter the file into the record.
Admitted as one.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. That's our staff presentation, so are any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Meeks in regards to this, this item, technically two items, it's the same parcel?
Those are one acre, gonna be one-acre lots?
Currently, it's, it would be proposed to be one-acre lots. Right now, if it was subdivided, it would be two-acre lots.
Any other questions for Mr. Meeks from board?
Not at the moment, Mr. Meeks.
Okay, not at the moment. Mr. Meeks, anyone else wishing to speak on your matter? If not, I'm open to floor to public comment.
No, sir.
Okay. Is anybody, anyone from the public wishing, present wishing to speak on this issue? See none, I'll close public comment.[1790.48] Board discussion. Any questions, comments, concern for staff, the attorney? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the land use change? That's what we're doing first, right? Number eight?
CPA 2503.
Yes.
One question.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Hale.
If, if, the change goes through, what about like the entrance and exit and things of that nature? Would all be off 51? Is that what we're looking at here?
That property, that property would be. Now, you will potentially have additional amendments and zoning changes that go with the surrounding properties that potentially would come back to 129th Road. Um, inside that subdivision, I say subdivision because I know that's the intent. It's a long-term plan as, as Friar Finance owns the available lands in Old Sugar Mill Farms and will be developing back towards 51. Once that's developed, then they would jump across the street and develop there. Right now, that property's only access is to State Road 51. In the big grand scheme of things, once the property is developed, would you have an alternate access potentially off of 129th through the whole thing? Potentially. Um, but right now, the property's only access would be off of State Road 51. Just for the, uh, convenience of traffic purposes, if you see how Old Sugar Mill Farms' entrance lines up, I would anticipate that that driveway would intersect directly across the street, so that you don't have any staggering of those driveway accesses, but those permits would be handled through DOT.
Yeah, that's. Good, no, go ahead.
I was, that's kind of where I was going with this, cause obviously getting into Sugar Mill, I think that's my side of the road, the other side is yours.
Correct.
And, uh, that's definitely an issue out there. I mean, it's a hazard and I wish we had the DOT folks here while we were talking about this, cause that, there needs to be some turning lanes there and some other improvements made, especially if something like this is gonna go in out there. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hale. I, I mean, I, I agree, Sugar Mills is, can be sketchy at peak, peak traffic, traffic times, but I would hope that through the permitting process, which has the state road, so they would go through FDOT, that maybe there would be something done once they start going across the roads, that becomes potentially a four-way.
That's right.
A, a four-way intersection. Um, but Mr. Meeks, to be clear, the same land owner owns the property contiguous to this that connects to 129th Road. So there would be no land owner saying, no, I'm not letting you put another arterial road out to the backside of 129th. It's the same.
They own all the land. If you look at the, the zoning map, that if I included with the, uh, application, uh, the property to the immediate north, uh, is already RSF 1 and has the density of one dwelling unit per acre, so that would be inclusive of the development. Yeah. So from that triangular portion, uh, from 51 all the way to 129th, they own all the land.
Correct. I mean, this particular parcel is in my district, so I'll speak up. I don't particularly have a problem with it whatsoever. I think that if, if, if this community's gonna provide housing for beginning families or the elderly, where do you want one acre lots at? Do you want them next to town, closer to the services that the government normally provides, whether that be sewer, water, 911, sheriff's office? You want them there or do you want them in Lurville? Particularly from where I sit, I'd rather have them closer to town. And I think that's where most of the services are gonna be. You don't want these one acre lots scattered all across your county where none of these, way away from all these services. So I don't have a problem with it.
And I think you said there're gonna be two acres though.
Currently, the land use allows for two acres and they could subdivide it that way. The land use amendment would provide for a, an intensity of one dwelling unit per acre.
Which it already, is contiguous to property that's already on the one acre lots.
Correct.
It's just adding to, owned by the same land owner.
Yes.
So I, I don't disagree with you. Sugar Mill being right across the street in my district, uh, there's some very nice properties and homes back in there and folks really work hard to keep a, a look, if you will, to their homes and properties back there.
I would echo that, Commissioner Hale. I think that, that this particular land owner is also a developer of, one of the developers of Old Sugar Mill Farms and I think that they, they did a good job with their covenants and restrictions of that particular development to make it as nice as they could, but also keeping it affordable for their, you know, end users.
And they have an act of HOA in there, which a lot of places do not, and I commend them for that as well, so.
So we say that to say that we have faith in the land owner to hopefully produce another good product.
Correct.
Any other questions, um, from the board? Or do I have a motion to approve CPA 2503 application?
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Now, instead of going through this again, I'm gonna ask, that's the land use, the zoning would follow that. Do I have a motion to approve LDR 2504, which is an application by the same land owner for the zoning change?
So move, sir.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hale. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero.
Mr. Meeks, did you move the file in?
Yes, I did.
All right, so admitted as one, then. I didn't hear it.
Four to one. I will close those two public hearings. We have another time specific, and I believe this is very similar as well, Mr. Meeks.
Yes, sir.
Same type theory, although this is not a residential development, this is something going from, um, conservation to agricultural. So I'm gonna read that, item number 10, which is followed by 11. We're doing the same thing, we're doing a land use, there's an application for a land use and then followed by the zoning on the same property by the same land owner. So at 5:35 PM or soon thereafter, or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider CPA 25 dash 04, an application by Anthony Bogus to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, changing the land use classification from conservation CSV to agricultural 1, A1. Uh, Mr. Meeks, this application also will be followed by application LDR 2505, again, by the same applicant on the same piece of property, which is the amendment for the zoning. Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. Um, the application proposes to request a change in the land use and the zoning atlas of, of Swanee County for a parcel of land that is 29.10 acres in size. Uh, the property in question was previously owned by the Swanee River Water Management District and as with all of the lands that is owned by the Swanee River, uh, Water Management District contain a conservation land use on them, uh, throughout the county. Periodically, the district looks at surplusing certain lands within the county. In 2012, this property was surplus and was purchased by, uh, an individual. Um, it's my understanding, the person who currently owns the property has really only used the property for hunting purposes from that time and has not built on the property. Of course, with a conservation land use and a zoning designation on there, that does not allow for any residential development of the property. This property was surplus by the district specifically, I believe, because the property itself is not located within the 100-year floodplain. So, um, if the property had been located within the 100-year floodplain and the amendment was proposed to go from conservation, uh, the only request that could be made is that the property be zoned as environmentally sensitive. And then, you know, of course, properties that are environmentally sensitive have to meet certain elevation requirements. Uh, this property not being located in a special flood hazard area has the availability of the contiguous land use, which is agricultural 1, which is one dwelling unit per five acres. So the property's currently on the market to be sold. It's hard to sell the property that you can't build on, so the amendment's been made to change the land use and the zoning from conservation to agricultural 1. And if you don't have any questions of me, I would enter both files into the record.
Admitted as one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Any, um, questions from the board members in regards to the two applications? I think you explained that pretty well myself.
I thought so.
Basically, when you say residential development, we're not, must be clear, we're not talking about residential development as in the previous one, we're talking about 1, 2, 5 residential. In other words, you can't go out there and build a house with a property that's on conservation. I understand that.
You may have one residential permit on the property, it's just if you were to buy it with a conservation land, you couldn't build anything.
You couldn't even build a home.
Correct.
Right. Um, any other questions? Public, are there any questions, or anyone from the public present wishing to speak on these two items? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any other questions from board members? Or do I have a motion to adopt CPA 2504? These two again, go hand in hand, guys, so if you're gonna do one, there's no need in doing one if you're not gonna do the other.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner White. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. The next one is the LDR 2505 and that is the application to change the zoning. You just did land use, put it in an agricultural. Do I have a motion to approve LDR 2505?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner White to approve. I'm gonna go with Hale, like I did last time, I rotated. Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. I will close that hearing. Next item on the agenda is constitutional officers. Are there any constitutional officers present wishing to speak tonight? None. Um, next item, staff items. Do we have any staff items? Ms. Flanagan, welcome ma'am.
I just wanted to give you an update on public works activities. Um, solid waste collection sites, the transition from the current situation over to pads, concrete pads for compactors, we've completed four. The plan is to complete 11 by the end of April. Um, it's, we've been able to do that a lot cheaper than we originally thought we could, so the eight that we had talked about, I think we're gonna get closer to 12 by the end of the fiscal year.
And so the public's aware, the compactors are what they're gonna start seeing in the collection sites, which are gonna replace the front load dumpsters, the green cans, which will allow us to get away from front load garbage trucks that are way more expensive than a roll-off style with just a metal can, if you were with a hydraulic cylinder that's pressing out all the wasted airspace and leach H, leach H chips.
Right. It's definitely better environmentally. It will also expand the life of our tipping station, so.
Correct.
The transfer station.
I just want to clarify that, so everyone knew what compactors were.
Okay. Um, the next thing is roadway updates. So you already heard from DOT on the ones that they're funding, so I thought I'd also give you an update on what our dedicated crew has been doing and is doing, um, construction crew. So recently, they've completed, um, Central Road 80th Terrace off of 136, 99th Lane and 84th Terrace. This week, they'll be putting down leveling course on 113th and McAlpin. And then, um, they've also started clipping the shoulders on 133rd, getting that prepped for, uh, an asphalt layer. And then next will be 165th between State Road 51 and 252. As far as signs and intersections go, a while back, DOT's, uh, safe, traffic safety engineer was here and actually presented some recommendations about making some of their off-system improvements at our intersections. And we are going to implement one of those soon. We'll have a message board up at 216th and 49th. That will become a four-way stop. And that's, that's by their design. And, uh, other than that.
216th and 49th, that mark?
Yes.
Market road.
216th and 49th.
That'll be a four-way?
Yes, sir.
Good.
So.
Was that, can we, uh, any turning lanes on that?
Not. That's not in the current plan, no, sir. But maybe at a later date, that could be implemented. But that's supposed to be installed later this month. Any questions for me?
No, ma'am.
I think the one at Beachville's worked out pretty good so far, so.
Once people got adjusted to it.
You about caught me today.
Um, Ms. Flanagan, I will mention to you that I spoke to the FDOT guys, I probably could've told you this afterwards, but since you're standing there, um, they are ready for you to reach out to them and very close to giving the go-ahead to advertise, go out to bid on 250, the front end, the 51 end.
I actually communicated with one of their other staff members today, so we're good.
Good.
And while she's there.
Oh, no!
No, I just wanted to say what a great job the guys are doing on the paving crew.
Yes, they are.
And we're accomplishing a whole lot more in the county and y'all, y'all, you guys will start seeing it, that it's a lot better job, it's gonna last a lot longer and we'll be getting more done, so I just want to give a shout out to them guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, Commissioner White, you wanna tell the public what we did about upgrading the box, the paving box and?
We went from just kind of part-time in the asphalt paving to, and we had, had a pretty much a parking lot paving box that wasn't getting the job done and it was requiring a lot more labor to get it done. So we've purchased more equipment, a new paving box, an actual commercial paving box and it sped the whole process up a lot. I think we're gonna probably pave more roads than we got money to buy asphalt with at this point, so. It's, uh, it's been a really good change and, and I think it's a good thing for the county and I think you'll start seeing a lot different sections of roads now, so.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, hats off to the guys from making the adjustment. I don't see, where's Gene's here? Oh, there he is, about to hide. Thank you, Gene, we appreciate you and your guys.
You and the crew, man. Yes.
Uh, staff, we're on staff items. Are there any other staff present wishing to speak? None, we will move along. We, commissioner items, are there any, any of you commissioners have any, um, particular items? Um, county attorney, Mr. Morrison?
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
You, you could've said the Knolls won and the Gators lost.
And Miami lost.
And Miami lost.
And Clemson lost.
So you had a good weekend.
Yeah. Why do you think I'm not saying anything? My voice is a little hard.
Mr. Chairman, I had to call, uh, the attorney Saturday during game day, uh, to clarify some, some kind of commission stuff, if you will, and, uh, his first question is, are you watching this game? So he was pretty.
In other words, leaving me a long quick call.
Yeah, that's what he wanted to say, yeah, absolutely.
Well, the first thing I said is what?
That's true. That's true.
Uh, county attorney items, consultants, are there any consultants present wishing to, yes, sir. Mr. Roberts, welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you, uh, thank you, board, for the approval on that waiver, that deposit waiver. That's, uh, great for the utility authority. I just wanted to take a quick minute and follow up on some questions. Back in September, there was an agreement, a resolution that came before the board that was regarding life insurance for the utility authority, and there were some follow-up questions. So, I just wanted to take a quick moment to just kind of recap some of the information that I've provided regarding the questions. So, one of the questions dealt with the class that was referred to, and what that really meant was who's going to be actually covered by that life insurance policy. It is for utility authority full-time employees only. There were some questions whether it would cover the utility authority board members. They are not employees of the utility authority, so therefore, they're not covered. There was, I got a recent question related to how it'll be paid for. The utility authority has funding to pay for that benefit coverage. Essentially, how it will work is the insurance company will bill the county. Most folks may not realize this, but the county is really a big umbrella of benefits that it provides, and there are many components under that umbrella. For instance, by example, the Elections Group is covered under county benefits. There are several other groups that are under that. When a invoice for a benefit component comes in, it's paid by finance. They'll look at it, they'll pay it, and that takes care of the debt. And then, they turn around, and then they break that down into all the other entities that actually owe something to cover that debt. So, the Elections Office may get a piece, the utility authority may get a piece. So, this insurance payment will function like many other benefits do. It'll come in, it gets paid by the county, and then Keith and his staff will take a look at that. They'll parse out, well, who else under the umbrella has this? What's their part to pay? And then, they get invoiced. And then, that way, the county's made whole for anything that is not technically related to county employees. So, that's how the billing will work. It hasn't started. To my knowledge, I haven't been aware of a bill that comes through, but I will work with Keith to make sure when something does come through, that, make sure he parses out whatever the utility authority needs to pay. We get invoiced for it. We will remit payment for it. The other thing I'd like to share is, and this may be not only for the board members, but for the public as well, I'm not always here in meetings, and there could be things that come up, or there are questions about the authority. What I would encourage is, I'm not expecting any of the board members to know some of these details. Mr. White and Mr. Mobley said on my board as well, but some of the questions that are being asked are really granular-level questions, and the board members just are not connected to that level of detail. So, what I would ask is if any folks have any questions, they want granular information about any of the things the utility authority's doing, or things like we're working with the different counties, there's information on our website. There is an email you can send a question to, info@nfwua.org. You can get information that way, or you can call me directly. So, I just don't want the board to feel like when you get questions that are deep into granular stuff, please refer them, if you can, refer them to me, and I will be happy to meet with folks, talk with them, and, you know, answer any questions that come up.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Roberts?
Appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Consultants, are there any other consultants present wishing to speak? None? General business, there are none, but we do have three additional agenda items, I believe. Number one is approval of memorandum of understanding between Florida Gateway College, Public Safety Training Center, and Swanee County Board of County Commissioners. There's no budget impact. Mr. Ferry?
Yeah, just a...
Or that's actually Chief Miller. I'm sorry. Chief Miller.
Yeah, this is just a basic agreement that allows us to document any training hours that our firefighters do at the college. We can then document them for our ISO credits, so it's just a formality, really, so...
Any questions for Chief Miller, or do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have motion by Commissioner White to approve. Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. The second one on the additional agenda item is approval of a change order, number one, with Blackwater Construction Services in the amount of $15,269.00 due to an increase in cost for charcoal-colored roof panels for the COVID isolation building, but in budget impact is none as to be paid from the grant proceeds. That one's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions, comments, concerns, or do I have a motion to approve?
I just want to say one thing on that.
Yes, sir, Commissioner White.
Well, I just, because I had the question, I was like, "Well, why is it costing us money to..." I thought we were just going from one color to another color, and we were getting up charge for it, but it's not the case. It's going from a galvalume roof to a painted roof. That's the reason for the change, so I just wanted it to be transparent.
Yes, sir.
And I make a motion to approve.
I appreciate that comment, and I accept your motion. Have a motion approved by Commissioner White. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. The third and last additional agenda item is authorization to reject sole bid received by bid number 2025-28 for the general contractor of the Catalyst Site wastewater plant and re-advertise the project. Mr. Ferry, you want to elaborate a little bit on that one?
Sure. As much as I don't want to agree with Mr. Hancock, but he's not right yet, though. He's not right yet. We will complete this project. It just might not be as soon. Yeah, you know, we only had one bid. It was a very high bid. Because of that, I think they probably knew, you know, some folks, I don't know. We got one bid. So, very high. We negotiated. We spent four or five weeks back and forth, couldn't really get to where we need to be. I can't recommend, you know, awarding a contract with, if we don't have all the funds or a plan for those funds available. So, talking with engineer and staff, we recommend just rejecting that, rebidding it. We will redesign the format of the bid, maybe have some bid alternates or some phasing in there. The really only, the time constraint we have with, was one of the grants with ARPA funds, so we met with Commerce, we were able to alleviate that requirement. So, we can still spend those funds first, but we don't have the time restraint. When you try to, it's a 500-day job, the contractors say, and we're trying to do it in 300 days. We'll rebid it as such, and I think those bids will be coming down and be much more competitive. We'll get more bidders on it. So, we'll slow down temporarily to rebid it 45, 60 days, you know, whatever that normal process is, but then we'll get right back after it and get on track, so that's our recommendation.
Okay. Anybody have any...
I'm glad. I'm glad you're doing that. I agree.
Do I have a motion to approve on that? Commissioner White? Yes. Have a motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Next item on the agenda is item 13, that is interim administrators' comments and information. Mr. Ferry?
Sure. Just a few things. Let me just, we go back to the wastewater treatment plant. We do need to be thinking, we don't know what that bid's going to come in, but we can't build half a plant. So, we do need to be thinking about how we bridge that gap, whether it's, we have time for another round of grants or appropriations, or we front-load it with some reserve money or a line of credit or whatever, but when we award that contract, we need to be able to have a plan to complete that project and to repay something if it came out of reserves or line of credit. So, not saying we'll be there. The numbers may came down under budget, and we don't have to worry about it. Otherwise, just in the back of your mind, be thinking about it. We've been talking to Keith and finance to see what some options are, but just wanted to mention that now, so there's no surprises down the road. As far as my comments, yeah, we went to the Capitol yesterday, me and Mr. Norris, and we met with Representative Schoeff and his staff, Senator Simon, and Department of Commerce. Great meetings. I think we had a very positive, you know, outlook and response for our meetings. I wanted to jump in with FDOT, but I figured I'd wait. Rep. Schoeff did mention in our conversation about, one of his priorities was to increase scrap and scop this year. Now, you know, you said 30 million. I thought it was around 20 or 25, but he wants to see upwards of 50. So, you know, that's all great, and we'll have to go through the process. There's no guarantees, but I do encourage the public, too, when they come, you know, relay to your commissioners, but also to the senator and the representative, the importance of those monies, that funding for our county roads, so... But he's right there with you, and he's already out in front of that, so wanted to mention that. Shelter project, still a priority for the senator and Rep. Schoeff as well. Still trying to maneuver how we get that through, you know, the legislature, and again, it's kind of like all our projects now, we got to have that phased approach. You know, they love the regional concept, and that's the way to go, but we've just got to figure out a way to phase that. So, we'll be working with the design team. We're already in the process of doing surveying, geo, you know, utility mapping and planning and design of the building. So, we'll work that into, how can we phase that if we don't get all the funding up front and over multiple years? But a great, great, great day of meetings with those guys. Appreciate lobbyist, Mr. Grissom, taking us around there and getting those. We wouldn't have got in the door a couple of those, you know, places at the busy schedule they have, so I think well worth the money spent there on the lobbyist and the lobbying firm. Commerce, we met on the CDBGDR grant. I think they had, what was it, over $200 million, I think, Mr. Norris, the 400, $400 million in the grant. You know, we have a big ask for it. They're ranking them right now. They're fixing to take the list to the governor's office for, after their scoring. They felt pretty good about our project. They believe in it, they understand it, they buy into it. We'll just have to see where it goes, you know, with the rankings when they finally come out. As well as our RIF grant, they, we talked to them about our RIF utility grant that we wrote, and they've already scored those. We should hear about the first of the year on where we are with that project, so just as DOT said, you know, staff works real well with the agencies and the programs, and so that helps them. They want to work with us, they want to help our project succeed, and they just, they do a great job for us over there in Tallahassee. Remind you, the legislative delegation next Wednesday from 10 to 12 will be right here in this room, so if you put that on your calendar, the public, 10 to 12, the representative and the senator will be over here, and to listening. It's not a public comment back and forth, but they will be listening to the public. So, if you have any ideas or suggestions for them, you can bring those in a respectful way. Mentioned the Frida Conference, that's not next week, but in two weeks, down in Ocala, the Rural Economic Development. And so, we expect, I know the last couple of years, all five of you guys have been there, as well as the administrative administrator and staff, so we're planning on being down there again. I think it's the 19th through the 21st. Is that right? Looking for Mr. Norris' approval. Yeah. Chris is not here to make sure we get it right, so we'll rely on Jimmy tonight, but November 19th through the 21st in Ocala, if you can put that on your calendar. We'll be giving some awards to our legislators down there as well that week, so we do want to be there to support them and thank them. And I think that was it. I don't want to even bring up property taxes and that kind of thing. That'll all shake out, but...
When we talking about that? Sir? When we talking about property tax?
You're welcome to make public comments at any of the commission meetings, if you